I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning Program and Zoning Commission Order. I guess first item on our agenda is we'd like to welcome a new commission member, Jerry Thorssberry. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the August 5th, 2014 Agenda. Any changes, corrections to the Agenda? If you've done, look for approval on that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have an Agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 1st, 2014. Any comments, corrections, amendments to those minutes that are pretty lengthy? See none, look for motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Financial report?
This is Schrader with staff, the financial report is included in your packet. Just kind of looking down through it, we're at the beginning stages of the fiscal year, so everything is generally in line, some things, even though it's budgeted over the annual process, some of the expenses come up front, some later in the year, so I don't see anything that looks out of line.
Any questions for staff? Look for motion to approve the financial report.
Also moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is, next is oral presentations, this is for anybody who'd like to, from the audience, who'd like to speak for anything not on today's Agenda. See now we'll get into the Agenda. That looks right. The time is now 4:02, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Brent Dollstrom for a site plan amendment in the R3 RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District to allow for the construction of 11 new twin homes located north of 5743 Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 25th, 2014." Whoever motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. Members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Sander O'Sstaff, applicant is requesting to construct 11 duplexes on Lot 76 in Summerland Park First Edition for a total of 22 new dwellings on the site. I'll request to construct one and two family development in that area. It would appear that the proposed site plan amendment would not have a negative impact upon surrounding traffic conditions in the area. It will be necessary that a stormwater detention plan is submitted, as well as a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the engineering department for review and approval. Track A located east of the private streets serving the development is being reserved for stormwater retention purposes. On the far eastern portion of the property in question, areas are located within a special flood hazard area as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map, community number 190025 and panel number 0316F dated July 18th, 2011. The duplexes on lots one and two are shown with a portion of the rear of those structures encroaching into the 100-year floodplain. It is permissible to construct structures within the 100-year floodplain, however, the lowest floor elevation needs to be one foot above the 100-year floodplain level. The applicant could also submit a letter of map amendment or revision that shows portions, a portion or portions of the property being removed from the floodplain. On the submitted site plan, the applicant's engineer makes note that they conducted a hydraulic analysis which shows that the proposed structures would not be located within a special flood hazard area. A sanitary sewer line runs parallel to the eastern property line of Lot 76 with a 30-foot sanitary sewer easement. Proposed sanitary sewer line that will serve the duplexes which is located within the private street will eventually connect into the sanitary sewer that is on the east side of Lot 76. There are no storm sewers located along Summerland Drive. The subdivision utilizes a ditch drainage system with drainage easements directing the flow to the northwest. However, there are two stormwater sewers that are shown along the east side of the proposed private street with the water being directed towards the east which is Track A. As noted, the applicant is requesting to construct 11 duplexes on the northwest side of Summerland Farms Development which is located near the intersection of Desert Road and East Orange Road. Plan Residence District is site plan specific and changes to the site plan must be approved through a site plan amendment process as either a major or minor amendment. The zoning ordinance requires for a residential dwelling, two parking spaces for each dwelling unit are required and a maximum of 50% of the space is required may be represented by garage space. The building elevation of the proposed structure shows one single stall attached garage for each unit along with driveway space where an additional vehicle can be parked. Lot is 2.69 acres in size and based on the density requirements for the R3, there shall be a minimum 3,600 square feet per family which in this case would allow for up to potential of 33 units on this site. However, determining the RP different, district is different as the maximum number of dwellings permitted in the RP district shall be determined by dividing the net development area by the minimum lot per dwelling. Therefore, 33 units multiplied by a factor of 1.25 for the potential, allows for the potential possibility of up to 41 units on this site. As noted, the duplexes would be served by a private street. The zoning ordinance notes when serving one or more two-family or multiple-family dwellings, a common easement of access at least 50 feet wide shall be provided. On a previous site plan, there was a 40-foot easement of access shown. An applicant has done an updated site plan that does show a 50-foot access easement accessing the proposed dwellings. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for site plan amendment in the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District be approved for the following reasons. The request is within the density requirements for the zoning district and the overall development is well within the density requirements. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area and with the conditions that the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, and drainage, and that a second access point is constructed in the subdivision as required by the fire code.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett, I just have a couple of questions. On page 19, when you mentioned that the applicant is in the process of revising the site plan of the 50-foot, has that been completed, because I think, so that's already done?
Yes, it got turned in today, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
And this is Mike Young, just the, the second access is what we had at the last meeting, that's the, it's the portion that's outside of Summerland Park, but to the,
On the southeast corner.
Southeast, okay, yep. That's all I had, thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? See none, look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, I'll bring it back to the commission for action or further discussion. And, once again, I'm abstaining from this vote as well as items C1 and C2.
Gotcha, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the, the site plan amendment with the two, two conditions from staff.
And I'll second.
Moved in second to approve the site plan amendment, subject to the, the two staff conditions. Any further questions, discussion?
Just for clarification, when the motion, I think this looks like a good project and looks like a, a good fit and a better fit than what we had, I guess, at our last meeting. We voted that, that request down, correct, or did we?
We tabled it, didn't we?
Did we table it, yeah, I just wanted procedurally, is it, is that withdrawn?
This is Schrader with staff, it was voted down, there was a subsequent motion to table, but procedurally speaking, once a motion on a, item on the agenda is acted upon, there's nothing to table, so procedurally that tabling was not considered a valid motion, so the motion to approve the request which failed stood, but the applicant can resubmit, so this was a resubmital put as a new agenda item on this month's agenda.
Okay, and it seemed like, I don't mean to speak for everybody in the neighborhood because I know there are issues there, but Mr. Dollstrom's here, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. I understand there've been talks and communications just in general, but then also when I saw this plan, it seemed to be much more of a fit to everything else, so. We appreciate your work, Mr. Dollstrom, and, and to the neighbors as well for working together and hopefully constructively.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
With one abstention.
With one abstention, yes. Time is now 4:11, and a hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by High Development for a site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of five 12-unit multiple-family dwellings generally located south of 200 East Ridgeway Avenue. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 25th, 2014." Who have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to point out, I'm abstaining from this A2.
Okay.
And I will abstain as well. We still have a quorum, correct?
Yes, once you have a quorum, unless there is something procedurally that dictates a different vote, you just need a unanimous, or a simple majority of those present.
Okay, thank you.
For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Miller with staff. The request would create five 12-unit multifamily dwellings for a total of 16 units. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. Vehicles would access the lot from Edgemont Avenue to the east and also from a private drive to the northwest corner to allow for additional access to and from Kimball Avenue and Ridgway Avenue. The site is zoned S1 Shopping Center District and has been since the adoption of the ordinance. A buffer wall would be required from the residence to the south consisting of a fence that would be at least six feet in height. An existing and proposed detention pond is located in the southwest corner of the site plan. Their, the area in question is not located within a floodplain hazard area. Waterloo West High School is located approximately .2 miles to the east. Bon Tregor Park along with Dry Run Creek is located approximately .3 miles southeast of the property in question. And Wheaton Franciscan Healthcare, Kimball Ridge Center is located across Kimball Ridge Avenue, or Ridgway Avenue to the north of the property in question. Utilities, a six-foot easement runs, a 16-foot easement runs along the south portion of the lot along with a 12-inch storm sewer line. A 12-inch private sewer line, storm sewer line extends north from the south storm sewer line along the portion of the western property line. The site plan shows an extension of an eight-inch sanitary sewer line coming from the existing line located along the west, along, located to the west of the south property line of the property in question. The site plan indicates that a six-inch water line located adjacent to the east property line will be extended west along the parking lot area between the proposed buildings to allow for access. The applicant is requesting the construction of five 12-plexes along with 60 detached garages and 72 surface parking spaces. The roads throughout the complex are shown to be 28 feet wide to allow for sufficient space for vehicular mobility. Primary access is shown from Edgemont Avenue, but additional access is shown in the northwest corner from Ridgway Avenue and Kimball Avenue. The site plan contains approximately the south 5.32 acres of the six-acre parcel. The applicant is planning to divide the property once the project is approved. Drawings indicate the proposed building will be three stories tall and be constructed in mostly vinyl siding along with stone veneer on the main level. Stone and vinyl shake siding is shown as detailing in the center of each building. Walkout patios are shown in the main level units and wood decks are shown for the second and third story units for all, for individual outdoor space. Existing fire hydrants are shown in the northeast corner and southeast corner, and the applicant has indicated that, that new fire hydrants will be placed in accordance with a fire department review. The zoning ordinance states that the lot area, lot frontage and yard requirements of the C2 Commercial District shall be considered a minimum, shall be considered minimum to the S1 Shopping District. However, it is expected these minimums will be exceeded in, in most instances. City council may, after recommendation from, from the commission, alter their yard requirements for the S1 District. The site plan shows garages placed in the front yard of the development along Edgemont Avenue. The zoning ordinance states that no accessory structures shall be allowed in the front yard, however, staff is considering the garages as a yard requirement, therefore, city council will be able to alter the yard requirements in the S1 Shopping District to allow for the garages to be placed in what would be considered the front yard. All concerns expressed by city engineers at the city technical review committee meeting are being addressed by the applicant currently. The fire marshal also expressed that he would need to verify locations of fire hydrants, confirm fire flow, and check the access that would, would be suitable for fire department. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for site plan amendment in S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of five 12-unit multifamily dwellings be approved for the following reasons. The site plan is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map which classify this area as commercial. The site plan will create additional infill development site in the primary growth area and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? None look for a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, sorry.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Fiftner, I have a property at 2560 Edgemont Avenue on the south border of the plan. And we would be against this, mostly because of concern for property value and some of the existing properties already in that area. There is an extensive amount of apartment housing in this area already. There has been, if you look at it in particular, the landlords are not good about keeping things up. We are concerned about devalued property in the area. We're concerned about Park Lane already being very congested as far as thoroughfare back and forth from, from Kimball to West 9th. And basically, we, we are absolutely opposed to having this, especially we have, just because people don't keep up apartments.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Chris Hagnis, I reside at 2635 West 4th Street. I am an employee of Covenant Medical Center, my office is at the Cancer Treatment Center. My window overlooks the back parking lot on this green space, which is under consideration, and I can personally attest to the traffic volume and flow in that particular area. In light of the parking lot currently there, which serves both the Cancer Treatment Center and all of the employees and staff at the Kimball Ridge Center, which is connected by a tunnel under Ridgway Avenue, we do have a significant amount of traffic, especially at peak hours of the day. In addition, that area also serves as a back entrance to all of the businesses in that Kimball Ridge Shopping District, including Kentucky Fried Chicken, Wells Fargo, all of those areas. We receive a significant amount of traffic through that road for that reason. In addition, West High being across the street at peak times of the day during school season, there is an enormous amount of young, inattentive driving proceeding through that area, cutting the corner between South Kimball and East Ridgway. The amount of traffic that particular area receives is completely disproportionate to the amount of business and residences currently there. And I can personally attest to that. If I counted the number of traffic violations I saw on a daily basis through that area, you would just put a city officer there nonstop. Also, that particular area is of special importance to me because it is the only green area in and around that part of West Waterloo. And like the previous speaker said, it does back up right next to a very large apartment complex currently there. And it also coincides with an ambulance entrance for the hospital. So, to put any additional traffic burden, traffic parking space in that area, I feel would not serve Covenant Hospital at large, the cancer center, the ambulance service, or any of the surrounding businesses. But, taking away that small bit of green space which currently doesn't serve any function other than being the only green space for this entire neighborhood, I think would be a negligent act. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request?
My name's Travis Armstrong, I'm with High Development, I represent the applicant. I appreciate the concerns of the folks that step forward. I, I can't speak to the traffic concerns in particular, but I can say we're a 25-year-old company. We own over 750 units in Johnson, Lynn, and Blackhawk County currently. We manage all of our own units and we, we don't manage, we don't do any third-party management. So, speaking to the concern of the property being well-maintained, you can go look, we have a project over on Green Hill Road in Cedar Falls. We always take care of our projects, we haven't had, we don't have a lot of complaints from surrounding property owners at our other locations. So, I'm, I feel confident in saying that the, maintaining the condition of the property shouldn't be a concern. We've done our best on the site plan to keep the buildings as far away from the adjacent single-family residential properties as possible to the south. We've also agreed to put a fence up between our property and the adjacent single-family properties, as well as leaving a, what I believe they refer to in the zoning ordinance as a park buffer, meaning that it meets the, so we're actually doing both forms of buffering required by the, the ordinance. That's really all I have to say, I mean, I think that it's a great infill piece. I don't know if Fred might have more to add as far as the, the traffic concern, but I will say that you have to understand that even though there's, there would be 60 units, those people don't all come and go at the same time. So, it's, it's not, well, it would maybe be adding some traffic, it's not, it's not all at 8 o'clock in the morning or 5 o'clock at night or any particular time, so. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
This is Tackett, just so I'm clear, I'm looking up there where the red line is and Edgemont, is that the bottom order there? Will that go all the way into that green space and just have a small strip for a buffer? It said.
Um, yeah. You see where Edgemont is on, so no, it doesn't go all the way to the south property line.
Okay.
And here's the, I don't know if you can see my cursor on the screen, but here's the green space, buffer park they're talking about.
Okay.
The, the single-family homes that'd be down here.
And then we're also, have agreed to put a fence along that south property line. So you've got fence, what the ordinance would define as park buffer, I believe, and then garages, we thought that would create kind of a further buffer between the actual units and the, and then, and then the actual units themselves.
So Edgemont is to the right, have you seen another map with, that shows the houses and the surrounding? Oh, they, okay.
Both of these are facing north.
Okay.
Lynn, do you have this page in your book?
I do.
It's right here, Edgemont's the north-south, but it also wraps down here.
Okay, that's my bad.
It also comes off Park Lane, but it,
The cursor's a little hard to see here, but here's the portion of Edgemont just south of Ridgway that they would gain access off of. Continuing to the south of there, the right-of-way continued through, but the road didn't, and this portion of right-of-way has been vacated. And then Edgemont picks back up again where the physical road is that connects to Park. But, that, this development would have access to Edgemont with, on the north end there, on the portion that would then have access further to the north to Ridgway in that way. It would not have any access from the south because that portion of Edgemont Avenue is vacated.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Fred Mehe, Waterloo, and I represent, our group represents High Development. If you look at that aerial there, you'll see the area where the current detention pond is. Eric, can you kind of circle that with your, and if you go back to that site plan, it'll kind of give you a relative idea of how much space there is between the, between the houses and the proposed project. So, as you see there, that's where the current detention pond is, and I think that that'll probably be expanded to some degree, but it gives a pretty relative idea of, there's going to be quite a bit of green space between the homes there. And Eric, thank you for pointing, I, I just want to make sure it looks like Edgemont goes all the way through and exits out to the, to the, that cul-de-sac, those homes to the south, and they're, that now is privately owned, and so there'll be no egress to the south. All the traffic will be flowing north off of Edgemont as well as a private access next to Covenant Hospital there. So, I think that should take care of the concerns that there'll be traffic going down through Edgemont Circle there to the south in those homes. I would state that this really is smart development, it's lovely green space, there's no denying it, but it's also, it's, it's planted as a, shot, and it's zoned as shopping center, and this is a real friendly use here, this area next to, or near the existing apartments. You know, those apartments, I remember when they were built, they're nearly 50 years old now, and they're, you know, they're second, third generation, and, and they're a completely different type of apartment than what you're going to see coming out, you know, that's kind of, that's, is involved in this project. So, there'll be, and, and that may help the other project decide that they need to maybe make some improvements to be more viable too, I, I don't know, but it's a market, it'll be market-driven, and this is a good project. The traffic, from the young gentleman that works at Covenant, I deal with it every day, as many people do out in that Kimball-Ridgway area, and it's really fun right now with everything that's going on. everything that's going on, but there, the city's doing all they can to improve it, and it's just, a lot of people live and work and reside in that area, and it's, it's, it's the path to and from a lot of areas, whether it's school or, or shopping, but I think that the city's doing what is necessary to be done there. And this pro, this space will be developed sometime, and this is a project that Covenant is the seller, and they're going to make sure that they've got enough parking for their, for their oncology, as well as their, their hospital services there on the other side of Ridgway. And they're not going to sell any more than, than they need to, or than they want to sell because they want to protect their, their existing investment there. So this is a project that starts with Covenant and it ends with High Development. Thanks.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, this is Thornsberry. I have a question. It said here in our notes that Dry Run Creek is three-tenths of a mile southeast of the property, and as a soil and water commissioner, I'm quite interested in conservation practices, and I'm wondering with more paved surfaces, if we should consider more conservation practices, which might include rain gardens or bio-retention cells to hold that water that will run, and since Dry Run Creek is so close. Does the city ever recommend that we have the developers consider that as part of their development, their new development?
This is Schrader with staff, and the city engineer, Thorson, can add on to this as well, but the city has a stormwater management ordinance that requires stormwater be managed. So there is an ordinance in place that essentially require that they do some form of detaining and holding back that water that runs off the property and release it at a, you know, rate that's provided by the ordinance. Let's get into technical data and how that's done. The means by which that they can do that management is, for the most part, left up to the developer. They can do bio-swales or rain gardens. Those are not prohibited by any means by the city. We haven't seen a lot of developers going that route yet. I can't say for sure why, but I would suspect some of it has to potentially do with maybe increased costs of construction, or probably more so increased costs or concerned of increased costs for maintenance down the road, as to more of the traditional little depression detention pond. That's still been kind of the more typical, but the depression detention pond, properly designed, meets all of the stormwater management requirements, including detaining water, but also addressing stormwater quality issues.
Anything you need to add? The applicant has a comment to it?
Eric Thorsterson here. I can't add a whole lot to what Eric said. I think he was very correct on everything he said, other than the fact that detention pond probably makes a little more sense in this location because that pond also serves a cancer treatment center area, and that wasn't built, or was built quite a while ago, not with the other types of management in mind, so they don't really have the space to do that up there. So detention probably makes the most sense in this case, although we're certainly open to other methods, but we're just not seeing a lot of that again, as Eric said.
Excuse me, Eric, before you sit down, I didn't mean to interrupt, I have a question. Do you have, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Question about the traffic. I feel like that's a valid concern. I know we're widening up Kimball Avenue, and I do live in, the apartments are downtown, and there are certain peak hours I've noticed, because our unit faces Sycamore Avenue, and I know there are certain times you do see traffic going in and out, especially coming off of Seventh on the Sycamore, and I know with as much congestion is going on in that area, are there plans to maybe, you know, relieve some of that? Because for myself, that is a concern I have, would be the traffic adding to that. Otherwise, everything else, I think, looks pretty good, but it would be adding more, and I'm just wondering if there are plans and.
Well, that's exact, excuse me, that's exactly what the Kimball Avenue project is doing, is providing for the heavier amounts of traffic and including new left-turn lanes so the traffic will flow much better. And that is a two-year project, so it is, as they've mentioned to some of people, it's going to be interesting out there for another year and a half, but in the end, the traffic will move much better on Kimball, we'll be able to handle more traffic, and, and we know that, and that's why we're doing that project to improve the traffic flow in a very busy commercial and residential area. So Kimball has needed some improvement for a long time, and we're, finally to the point we're actually building that, and it will be much better when it's all done. It will be congested and slow and that sort of thing during the construction, but when it's all done, it'll be much better.
To your question, I wanted to add, on the stormwater management, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to be able to tell you the specific details, but I think it is relevant to point out, this project is contingent on receiving an award in the multifamily new construction round six program. And as part of that, there's a component to that called the Iowa Green Street Criteria, and there is specific requirements within the Green Street Criteria that have to do with stormwater management, that I think, again, I can't speak to the, to the exact details of it, but I think it's above and beyond what maybe most municipalities require. So I don't know if that puts your mind at ease, but we're probably going to have to do, do more than what would normally be required to meet the requirements of the program. So I just wanted to point that out to your question about what we were doing. And I know that there are also additional points you can get for doing rain gardens and different things of that nature. We're still kind of in the process of, of figuring out what we can and can't afford to do in that regard. So anyway, I just wanted to comment on that. And then as part of that, I wanted to point out, that submittal for the multifamily new construction is actually due on Friday. And so I just point that out, and I believe that it goes to the city of Waterloo and then to the state. It's a competitive award process, and so I just want to point out that timing is of the essence on this. By the time it goes to the state, I think that shovel readiness is a big concern for the state, so to be able to say that your project is, is approved at the municipal level is very important. So I just, I just want to make everybody aware that, you know, we don't really have time to drag it out, or we'll miss our deadline with the state and not be able to make a submittal. So, thank you.
My name is Tom Fifner, and my wife Carolyn spoke first about property value concerns. We live on, we live immediately adjacent to this property in question to the south on that portion of Edgemont Avenue. Our backyard abuts this project. One, I kind of share concerns on property values, and I guess I would be interested in knowing if this is going to be or can be Section 8 housing, and what measures will be taken by the developer to, to assure property maintenance for purposes of property values. That's kind of been covered. Another concern I have in particular, I heard one of the things they're wanting to do as a buffer is to put up a six-foot fence. I heard right along the property line, well, that'd be directly on our property line. I have concerns about that. Our property in particular, and possibly some others buddingness, have the situation where we really don't have access to our backyard. To be able to drive into our backyard from the front yard because of the lay of the land, it's kind of built on a side hill, and I happen to have a tree on the other side of the house. So really, our only access into our backyard is frankly, honestly, across this green space. And looking at the develop, the, the proposed plan with the layout of the apartment buildings and stuff, and leaving that green space, I'm happy about that, but I'm, have concerns that a fence directly on the property line would block any possibility of access to our property. And I guess I'm concerned about, you know, fire protection too, if, you know, we've got a, the additional access to the back might potentially come into play in the case of a, a fire, you know, maybe that'd be additional access for the fire department, so I'd like to know a little bit more about this fence and whether, I guess I would prefer to see a fence along the back of the, the construction, the development on the other side of the green space. That'd be my preference.
On, so you, this is Whitehead. So just to be sure I understand what you're saying, you're saying you, you currently drive on this property to access your backyard, so you would like a fence to be deeper into their own property, which they're buying, so you can continue to drive on the property they're purchasing?
Well, it's, I, I have, and it's the only way of me, of accessing our backyard, so.
It might be a private easement issue that you'd have to talk to the developer about if you wanted to continue to do that, in my opinion?
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to voice that concern.
Chris Agnes, again, just one final comment about the traffic. If you were to drive down Edgemont Avenue right now after this meeting, you would see signs on that road just past Jim Lynn and right next to the ambulance parking. That's a slow congested area. And if you think that is going to get better by adding 60 families at the end of that dead-end road, I would suggest that you go take a little bit of a drive yourself and see. My wife has a business on Kimball Avenue. It backs up to Cambridge Apartments, which I assume houses a similar number of families. It's about the same size, three buildings. I can tell you right now, we have difficulty accessing the back parking lot of our business because of the traffic generated by those units, which also have their own parking. I can tell you, people in rental units don't respect their parking spaces. They park wherever they can get a space. Being a renter, in the past, I've done that myself, our parking lot will be full of cars and kids playing and everything that you can imagine. I wouldn't suggest in any way that because Covenant has decided to sell a property they are not using, that they are in any way endorsing multifamily units being developed in their backyard. I think if you looked across the street from Covenant Hospital on Ninth Street and saw the amount of apartments across from their hospital currently, they would have been here telling you different, and I'm rather appalled that I am the only one here to speak on their behalf. So, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? Seeing none, look for motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and reaction.
I appreciate the comments that have been made in regards to concerns about the development of this property and its future accessibility to the homeowners along the southern part of the, of the area. But this seems like a reasonable request by this company to build much-needed housing for the city of Waterloo. And as far as the traffic and the congestion of the traffic, that seems like that is an issue that the city of Waterloo needs to deal with. I don't think that it's up to the developer to deal with that kind of issue. I think it's up to the city to find ways to deal with the traffic. If it's high volume in that area, or it's not safe, or there's safety issues, then I think the city needs to work with businesses and other individuals that live in that area and come up with a, a plan of action of how to deal with it, but to tell the developer that, nope, you can't build here because, you know, we're concerned with there being too much congestion, I think is unfair and unrealistic. So I would like to make a motion that we approve this application with the conditions that were listed by the staff.
This is Tackett. I'm going to second that motion, and I appreciate the comments too on it. One thing that has been brought up in several of our motions is how we classify renters. My husband and I are renting again. We've been a homeowner for nine years locally, and the apartment complex I live in, yes, we pay a little bit more than the other areas, but I find you get what you pay for, and I think it's been a very good, good fit. And being a businessperson, I find that competition is good, and if you start improving the area, it does put a little bit of pressure on those that aren't improving, because not all of us are going to trash our area. Ours is very well-maintained, anything's wrong, it's fixed immediately. We have residents, professional owners here in the area. I walked here today, I walked to my business, but I do rent. So I think in fairness, again, you get what you pay for, and yes, there are some places I hear in town that perhaps could be quite a bit improved, but there are some good landlords, and I think with proper, you know, maintenance and being responsible, I think we should give them a chance, and it sounds like we're getting the traffic area taken care of, so I just want to share that's why I'm going to second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to the one staff condition. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Tackett?
Yes.
Thornsberry?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Young?
Abstain.
Mehe?
Abstain.
Yes.
Motion carries. Go on to the city council within two to four weeks for, the planning commission just makes a recommendation, go on to the city council.
Next is another public hearing, and the time's now 4:47. The hearing is scheduled at this time. This is a request by Goodwill Industries for a site plan amendment in the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a new commercial building located east of 2535 Crossroads Boulevard. At this time, we should receive and place and file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 25, 2014." We have a motion, receive and place this motion on notice, on file, excuse me.
I'll still move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Melinda with staff. The request would allow for the development of a new 8,990 square foot building for Goodwill Industries. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on the area access from the lot would be gained from Crossroads Boulevard. The site is zoned S1 Shopping Center Commercial District and has been since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. The site plan shows a detention pond in the southeast corner of the lot. There is also a drainage way that extends across the entire rear of the lot in question, where the applicant is planning to retain open green space. A 60-foot drainage easement is also shown on the site plan along the rear of the lot. Approximately, the rear 35 feet of the lot is within the 100-year flood plain. The rest of the lot in question, including the area for the proposed building and parking lot, are not located within the flood plain, as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate maps. flood insurance rate maps. A 30-foot utility easement is along the front of the property in question, and 18-inch sanitary sewer line runs along the north side of the subject property. The site plan shows a store gaining access from Crossroads Boulevard from a private drive onto the adjoining properties. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for every 250 square feet of floor area for a retail store. The proposed store is 8,990 square feet, which would require 36 parking stalls. The site plan shows 47 parking stalls, which exceeds the required limit for a retail store of this size. The site plan appears to meet all setback requirements for the S1 Shopping Center District. The site plan shows a building with brick facade and three loading docks in the rear or south side of the building. The front of the store will be complete with a brick facade, corrugated metal paneling, and stucco finish at the entrance. The site plan shows a building with a setback of approximately 25 feet closer to the Crossroads Boulevard than BioLife Plasma Services Building to the west, and staff would recommend that the setback of the proposed building be adjusted to meet the setback of the said building to the west. Plating is required, and the applicant has submitted a preliminary and final plot of the proposed lot. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for the site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 8,990 square foot building, commercial building, to be approved for the following reasons. The site plan is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as commercial. The site plan will create additional infill development site in the primary growth area and subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and the setback of the, of the building is adjacent, is adjusted approximately 25 feet to match the existing buildings to the west.
Any questions for staff? Yes.
Thornsberry here. I have a question. In the first, actually the second paragraph under your staff analysis zoning ordinance, the sentence says that the site plan appears to meet all setback requirements for the S1 Shopping Center District. And then, two paragraphs later, you talk about the 25 feet.
Yes. For the minimum setbacks for the S1 Shopping Center Commercial District, it would meet those minimum setbacks. We would like them to meet the setbacks of the adjacent properties or the buildings to the west. I believe it was BioLife and also Best Buy to the west.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question regarding access. Is, is, is there only one access point into the development, or is there cross easements across BioLife to the west? I'm having a hard time seeing that on the site plan.
This is Schrader with staff. I'm not sure if the applicant or representative is here, but they indicated that they do have a cross easement across the BioLife property, which then connects to the driveway on the eastern end of Best Buy's property to get out to Crossroads Boulevard, and then would also have a cross easement over the area shaded in gray there on the site plan in your packet, which would be, you know, whenever kind of the next lot or the next development occurs to the east there would kind of be in their lot.
Yeah. It doesn't look like they're providing access to, to the future. Well, I'm talking about this way, to the east.
Yeah, they are. They're kind of showing what they're labeling as a frontage road. It's, it's not a public frontage road. It's, you know, private, but it, and it's what
Okay.
was already kind of what BioLife did, and they're kind of showing that extended, and then extended to the east more as well.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request? And then look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second to all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Bring it back for more discussion, comments, action.
This is Mike Young. Seems like a good project, excuse me. So I'll recommend approval with the two conditions as noted in the staff report.
Second. Gustafson?
Moved and second to approve the site plan amendment request subject to the staff conditions. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on our agenda is a special permit. This is a request by Greg Cooper for a special permit to allow for the development of a storage facility, warehouse storage, in a C2 commercial district located east of 3633 University Avenue. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. The applicant seeking a special permit to allow for the construction of a 2,497 square foot storage facility to be located to the east of the existing U-Haul building at 3633 University Avenue. There would not appear to be a negative impact on the surrounding areas, as the area is all zoned C2 commercial district. There would not appear to be a negative impact on the traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area. There are two existing access points to the site, one from University Avenue via a frontage road, and one from South Hackett Road. There are no sidewalks in the immediate area. The property in question, as well as the surrounding area, was zoned C2 commercial district upon the adoption of the zoning ordinance adopted in 1969. The area is an existing developed commercial area comprising various commercial uses along University Avenue. The existing U-Haul business has been at this location since 1989. All utilities are available to serve the site. No changes are being proposed at this time. The comprehensive plan and future land use map designates this area as mixed commercial. A development such as this is allowable in the C2 district upon approval of a special permit for storage by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. The existing structure to the west has been used as a primary rental office since 1989. The applicant now wishes to offer onsite storage of storage containers similar to pods. The request to construct the 2,485 square foot warehouse would appear to be compatible use of the property. The site is currently gravelled, and therefore hard servicing will need to be added per the zoning ordinance. Staff is working with the applicant to calculate the square footage of paving needed. Storage facilities may be constructed in the C2 upon a special permit, which shall review the location for compatibility of the surrounding area, highest and best use of land, proximity to major thoroughfares. It is the intent of, it is intent for such uses to be towards the rear of the highly visible commercial property. The storage facility will be located on a frontage road with access from University Avenue, a principal arterial street. Staff feels that although the building will not be behind the principal permitted use, the building design will blend in well with other nearby commercial uses. The applicant is not proposing subdivision of this property at this time. Therefore, staff recommends the request for a special permit to allow for the construction of a 2,490 square foot, 97 square foot storage facility to be located to the east of the existing U-Haul building at 3633 University Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area, as the area is zoned C2 commercial district, and subject to the following condition, that there not be any outside storage allowed at the site in question, that a full site plan be submitted prior to construction, and that the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett. I'm just, this sounds good. I just want to find out what, how do they basically differentiate between outside storage and facility like this? I mean, this makes sense, but I'm just wondering, what is the fine line? Is like outside storage, like little sheds? How does a planning department kind of look at the difference?
Well, as we'll see, it's a warehouse that houses the pod-type containers. Those containers are not allowed to be stored outside at any time. Obviously, if, you know, they have to move around, or they're doing cleanup, or whatever, they sit out for a couple hours, that's one thing. But you cannot begin to stack them and store them outside of the facility for long periods of time.
So outside storage would be like, if, like you said, you had a container, or a pod, or just a little, basically any little container, but as long as it's a building, then it's not considered outside storage?
Exactly.
Correct? It would be an actual, okay.
Right. Now, there are existing outside stores of vehicles, which that will, that can continue to happen. But the primary use for this building, the things that are intended to be inside must stay inside.
Thank you. I just wonder, because in the past, we talked about outside storage, and in my mind, I was thinking, are we talking about a building that stores things? But you're looking at anything that people would store, so it's mostly kind of a, more about the wording? So storage, we're looking at is anything outside of a contained building? Is that correct?
Right.
Any other questions for staff?
This is, oh, go ahead. This is Schrader with staff. I did receive a call today from Councilman David Jones, who expressed concern regarding the design of the building, the use of vertical metal siding, and questioning whether or not that is appropriate in this commercial corridor. It was noted that they are, I can scroll back up to the side elevation, they are adding to it in a way that does kind of blend in with the existing design of their existing building. And we do not have any sort of design review or specified design criteria over this commercial corridor.
Was there in the past, Eric?
I'm not aware that there's ever been any sort of design standards on here. Only, we have design review in the downtown Main Street area, and we have design review along the Highway 218 overlay corridor. There has been discussion in the past about adding design review and overlay areas over some of the other highway corridors, which are most of the commercial corridors that wouldn't necessarily catch every commercial corridor. But, and University Avenue is technically a state highway, at least for a little longer anyway.
I would share in David's point to, you know, metal siding, you know, at least at a minimum to have the, University Avenue facing section to have some brick or block, or either 100% or, or a large portion.
This is Tackett. That, I would go along that, because from what I've been told, pole barns alike, don't they look very similar with the siding? I mean, maybe I'm correct, but with the vertical, I'm looking at that, wouldn't they look fairly similar? And that's what we're trying to avoid?
And if I'm not mistaken, that's something we can recommend, strongly urge, but the C2 allows for it, so I don't know if you can really force them, but...
Well, as part of a special permit, they can attach conditions to the approval.
Yeah, I suppose you could, yeah.
If they were building this building for regular U-Haul purposes, not, it's because it's considered a storage warehouse facility, and we have that use listed as a special permit in the C2 commercial district. It's a principal permitted use in an industrial district, meaning no special permit approval is needed, and, you know, and then again, as long as it's not in a design review area, there would be no really comments you could really have, suggestions at most. And, yeah, there's no design review over this, but because it is a special permit, it is at least an option. We might want to have, you know, the applicant is here, so they can kind of comment on the design a little bit too. But it was a call that I got today, so I relayed that on.
This is Tackett. Is there a cost comparable way to have siding that would, you know, fit in, but be an alternative to the metal siding?
Probably should have the applicant discuss that.
Yeah, it's hard for us to address. I think it's going to increase costs. I can't really address how much.
My name's Greg Cooper. I'm with Metal Building Solutions. I represent the owner of U-Haul. I guess it depends on what your objection is. If it's the vertical lines or the shadow lines created by the vertical siding, there are, there are other metal panels available that are flat. There are some that are even textured, that represent, or that imitate hard surf brick, or the stucco, or you will. So. I guess it's, it's, it's your call. I don't know.
Otherwise...
What the objections are.
Right. Otherwise, for an actual veneered surface, I mean, I know it can be done.
You mean like an, an actual stucco, like a real hard surface, brick?
Yeah.
Oh, it'd be considerably more.
So you have material that would look similar, or that would still be?
Yeah.
Is there quite a bit? I mean, is a fairly large difference in cost, or?
Three or $4 a square foot, probably. So, and you've got about 1,500 square feet, so.
And this is Mike Young. I don't mean to speak for everybody else. I think the concern was not so much that metal's necessarily bad, but just the aesthetic with the shining neighborhood. So I think that's what the objective is.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but when there, but when there isn't a clear written guideline, it's, it's hard.
Well, I think that may come from looking at other buildings around there.
Sure.
As to kind of the neighborhood uses and what they've got.
Yeah, and a lot of the buildings right in that neighborhood, too, are quite old. You know, they're back in the 50s, probably, or 60s, and so there's been a lot of advances and changes in building products and materials.
Yeah.
Available materials.
But I don't know that it's necessarily just that all metal necessarily is bad, that sort of thing. And if you're talking about that things have changed, then
Yeah, yeah.
let us know what has changed.
If you go down, like, down to the new Honda building, they've got all flat metal, except for the face. Community, is it?
Oh, okay.
Next door, community. They've got flat metal on the sides.
Okay.
It's still metal, but it's flat.
But, and that looks more like paneling, I guess, or?
Eh, kinda. You just, yeah. I'm trying to think of something else that might be in that neighborhood, but nothing comes to mind.
Okay.
I guess.
What I'm gathering is just the general concern was, don't just have a standard metal pole building that you...
No, it's not a pole building.
No, see, as, as a barn, yeah. And that's where you can come in and say, no, it's not a pole building, and here's why. So.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll leave that up to you. My question, if you could scroll back up a little bit, is just where this would be located on the, on the property? And it looks like, from my
It was a site plan.
My packet, yeah, right there. It's where the orange building is. That's where the proposal, okay. I just couldn't tell. I was looking at a black and white picture, so that's all I had.
We're trying to utilize the slope, the grade slopes to the east, pretty drastically through there, and we're trying to utilize that slope in our loading dock, so that we don't end up with a four-foot hole.
Gotcha, okay.
Trying to minimize that.
And if I understood correctly, you're saying it's $3 to $4 a foot in addition to what they've budgeted right now?
Yeah, yeah. But if, you know, if that's a requirement, you need to tell us how much, and, yeah.
Well, I agree with Mike. I think it's more the aesthetic purpose.
Yeah, just compatibility, I guess, would they ever propose.
And again, it's, it's, we just need to know how much. Yeah, yeah.
This is Tackett. This is, is this an overlay, but not an overlay because it's state road? I know we've had like different quarters. Does this fall where it has to go to one of those commissions or this, does not?
It is not in an overlay district. There, when we were overhauling the zoning ordinance, which kind of, some of that review started way back in 2007, I think, maybe as far back as 2006, we didn't end up adopting it until 2011, but a lot of the legwork, those special meetings we were having, were somewhere around that timeframe. There was some discussion about establishing overlay districts with design review, basically over all of our highway corridors. We've got overlay over 218 with design review. We have an overlay over 20, but no design review. And then it was talked about adding design review to that, adding an overlay with design review along 60, US Highway 63, US Iowa 21, University Avenue, which is a highway as well. I think those were the main ones.
San Martin was in there too.
Was it? Was San Martin discussed? And the, as I recall, it's been several years now, but as I recall, the planning commission actually recommended approval of moving forward with that. There was a work session with the city council, and there was a lot of concern at that level from moving forward with... from moving forward with overlay districts and design review expansion, and it kind of got dropped. And, I mean, it hasn't really been discussed now of any significant amount for several years, so it's certainly something that can be further discussed. But as it stands now, there is no overlay district, there's no design review or stated design requirements, but for uses that are a special permit, conditions can be attached to the approval of a special permit, which could...
The city does have language, though, in some of those, for the help, to help the applicant, isn't there?
Like in the Highway 218, where it kind of talks about...
Minimums.
Minimum design standards. Sure. The Highway 218 Design Review Board has a set of design guidelines, which will generally try and persuade against vertical metal siding, but they struggle with it, too, because they get, you know, just as he was noting, there's a lot of older development around here within the Highway 218 corridor, there's a lot of older development around it as well, and, you know, they'll get it, and there's a pole building across the street, and, you know, right next to it, and, so it's a lot of discussion at that level, too, and we've seen approvals for, you know...
Well, part of, part of their issue, too, whatever they do, they, they want to paint, you know, you saw the colors and stuff under their logo, if you could go back to that colored rendering, please. Yeah, there, that, that's painted, that's a painted surface, or, we need a paintable surface for them to apply that to it. So something along the line of a stucco or something, just, that just isn't going to work, you know, just isn't going to work. Possibly, if I could just throw this at, at you, the front of it, you see we've got a lot of windows, and on the east elevation...
So this north elevation is the one facing university?
Yes, that faces university. And that one, around the corner on the east elevation, we also got these large windows, each one of those windows units is six foot eight inches tall and they're eighteen feet long. So there's a lot of glass on those two walls, okay? If we could make those two, or at least enough to cover the glass, make it a flat metal, that would still give them something, with a paintable surface.
Is the rest of it white?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And a metal roof?
Yes, but it's, oh, yeah, you can see the metal roof, I guess. If the metal roof is an issue, I mean, that we could change the elevation of the pitch of that, so that it's maybe invisible. We get it flat enough, it's not even visible, so. Or parapets, possibly a parapet across the front that might still, so it's a straight line across the front, that would still allow them to have all that glass and the paintable surface.
So they're going to put that pattern on there with the glass, so that it really doesn't look like a pole barn?
This is Thornsberry. I was out there Sunday, and I got to tell you, this, this sort of goes with what the U-Haul building currently looks like, and I...
Just repainted, yeah.
Yeah, I can't see that this would be a detraction at all. I think it's an asset for that little corner there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the special permit request?
Hi, my name's Randy Dixon, I'm president of the U-Haul Company of Iowa. I just wanted to speak just briefly about the imaging. The reason we do it this way is so that we can still build them affordably, but to make them look nice, and once your eye sees the imaging, you really don't know that it's a vertical siding, because it takes your eye away from that fact. So, we kind of do the imaging purposely that way, so it can be done affordably but look nice, so.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the special permit? Bring it to the commission for action?
And this is Mike Young, I'll move for approval. I'd say, though, whatever happens here with planning and zoning, it's a recommendation to the city council, so keep in touch...
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustment, excuse me. Keep in touch with them as it goes forward as well, because that's where really the final decision will be made. And my guess is it's just the questions on aesthetics, when you hear that it's the metal building, and maybe if you can go through and explain what it is, that may alleviate some of those fears or concerns. And maybe, maybe they're unfounded, maybe they are, there is something, though, that can be done, just, we'll see during that. But I'll move for approval, subject to the three conditions as noted in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Moving second for approval of the special permit, subject to the staff conditions. All those in favor, or any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, and that'll go on to the Board of Adjustment later this month. To go along with Mr. Young's comment of how to combat the aesthetic question, maybe pictures of an actual building? I think those, from sitting up here, usually the pictures kind of help us. I know, you know, yeah, we can see what that looks like, but if we can see it on a real site, sometimes that helps. This will be the first one of its kind, is that what you...
You mean like this? Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is their kind of national, what they're doing.
They're changing, too? Okay.
I think that rendering calls out the vertical siding a little more than it really is.
Yeah.
With the black lines.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay. If it's okay with the commission, I would like to tie in the preliminary and final plats of, I guess, items C1 and C2 together, in one single staff report and a single vote. And then we'll do that also for the next four items, so there'd be three there instead of six. So next on our agenda is a request by Brent Dalstrom for a preliminary and final plat of Summerland Condos North First Edition, a replat of Lot 76 of Summerland Park First Edition.
This is Andrew of Staff, this is the preliminary and final plat request. On your plat, notes that the plat would be served by Summerland Circle, which would be classified as a private street. Engineering Department noted that that name would not work as similar to other streets in the area, and previously noted in the Site Plan Amendment Staff Report, they submitted a new plan, and that will now be called, or requested to be called, Harvey Drive. There is eight-inch sanitary sewer along the east part of the plat. Pro-sanitary sewer line is shown going down the middle of Harvey Drive, with that connecting into the existing sanitary sewer line along the eastern portion of the property. And also on this revised plan, they removed the cul-de-sac and installed a hammerhead turnaround instead. Fifty-foot drainage and storm sewer easement is located on the eastern portion of the property. Water is located within Harvey Drive to the south of the proposed plat. On the plat, two fifteen-inch storm sewer lines are shown on the east side of Harvey Drive, discharging towards east in the area, with that would be used for water retention purposes. A ten-foot drainage easement plus shown along the westerly line of the subdivision. However, this drainage easement has been increased to fifteen feet wide, based on comments that were heard at the Technical Review Committee meeting last week. Lot sizes range from 5,720 square feet to 25,710, with an average lot size of the subdivision of 8,923, excluding tract A. On the submitted preliminary plat, most of the items required from the checklist are shown on the plat. The plat is missing the width of proposed private street and what its thickness will be. The cul-de-sac has been removed, and a new hammerhead turnaround is shown instead. Existing contours of the site are shown, however, the proposed elevations of the site, also known as a grading plan, would need to be shown. Summerland Park First Edition is appropriately labeled on both preliminary and final plats. Within the deed of dedication, the deed of dedication for Summerland Park would apply regarding restrictions and minimum standards for this construction of any of these structures on the eleven lots of subdivision. When reviewing the deed of dedication for Summerland Park First Edition, notes that lots may be split or divided in a fashion to provide more lot area when added to an adjoining lot. No dwelling shall be built or maintained on any partial lot unless said partial is combined with an adjoining lot or partial lot, so that the resulting lot has no less frontage than the smallest lot indicated on the plat. Applicant is proposing to split Lot 76 into multiple lots, however, none of these lots are being combined with adjoining lots. Based on that wording, there may need to be some updating done to the deed of dedication. Staff is recommending approval over the request for the preliminary and final plat of Summerland Condos First Edition, as the plat can be serviced by the extension existing utilities in the area. The plat meets the intent of the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city. And subject to the condition that a revised preliminary plat document is submitted showing proposed contours and stormwater retention, and that a revised plat deed of dedication is submitted that does not use Summerland Circle as the proposed street name.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. Thornsberry here. So, in the last paragraph of your staff analysis, you talk about a concern about the conflict with the deed of dedication, and yet that isn't a condition that you're requesting or recommending. Help me understand.
That could have been clarified better, but that would fall under number two or revised deed of dedication, but the Summerland Circle has already been addressed, but the other one probably would need to be addressed. We did note that we think there's a conflict with the other deed of dedication, but those restrictive covenants are private restrictions, so it's not really the city's to enforce, but we kind of pointed out that it looked like there could be a conflict there, that I think they probably could address by putting wording that, you know, the proposed deed of dedication now basically says that the restrictive covenants of the previous subdivision apply. They can probably just put in wording that says the proposed, the restrictive covenants of the previous subdivision apply, except as this, you know, and note an exception.
So is that something that we should add here? So that it's, because it's kind of a mess now. We don't want to create any additional confusion.
And if the applicant, I'm not sure if the applicant is here, they might want to address that. I don't know that it would be a bad idea for us to add it, and at the same time, since it is a private restriction that the city doesn't really enforce, I want to be a little careful about, you know, overstepping there, too, so.
Hi, Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering. I guess that's something, if you want to attach that to, and I certainly think that could be addressed from when it goes to planning and zoning to city council, that we could make any modifications that's recommended by staff in the deed of dedication.
The previous plan for the site, when it was proposed to be twelve duplexes, and they were proposing to replat that from the current Lot 76 of Summerland Park First Edition to Lot One of, whatever the name is, at that point in time, they were kind of proposing similar wording that says the restrictive covenants of Summerland Park First Edition shall apply, except, and in that one, they had a couple of different exceptions, because there was a couple of different things that that proposal was running into issue with, and they probably, you know, didn't think about any other ones, because once it switched to duplexes, most of those conflicts went away, but I think maybe a new one arose that talks about the splitting of existing lots, so. I think it should be easy enough to address.
We can certainly address that in the process. Thank you.
Mrs. Tackett, I had a question on the public water and public sanitary. Is that basically, is everyone in the area served under public, or, so it's just, basically just a note? So, I didn't know if there was an alternative, I'm just thinking about, since the water has been such an issue for that area, I was just curious.
Well, the water issue is stormwater runoff, that's talking about the drinking water, the public water line and the public sanitary sewer line.
Okay.
Which it is public, even though it's a private road.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, this is Thornsberry. Just for my edification, those are private roads out there, and when the lines are extended, those streets are dug up, is the city responsible for putting them back the way they were? Or the contractor? Or the condominium?
This is Schrader with staff, the developer would be responsible.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody else in the audience like to speak for or against the, or speak to the plat request?
Brad Wells, 5553 Summerland Drive, and this might address kind of the question between the deed of dedications. The, I think the only real conflict that we're running into with the deed of dedications is, inside the deed of dedications for Summerland Farms, we've got no, it restricts long-term on-street parking, so, kind of the concerns are that with just a one-stall garage, if you have, you know, a family, even a family of three, maybe you have a teenager, two adults might have a vehicle, a teenager might have a vehicle as well, so then that might leave two, two cars on the street. So, yeah, everything else has been, pretty much, the garages are attached now, you know, all the, all the neighbors are, are very excited about them being duplexes as opposed to the, to the condos, but that's, that's really the only, the only hiccup that we're running into is with just being single-story garage, or, single-stall garages, that, that may put a lot of vehicles on the street, where we're hoping to, hoping to get them off the streets and, and even off our driveways, so.
Did I read there was a note that there is a single-stall garage plus an additional parking stall within the...
Yeah, and I missed the public hearing, so I'm not sure what the, what the layouts were, if there's, if that's in the plans or not.
I don't know if that was read today or earlier, but...
Mrs. Tackett, you may have answered my question. This is the project that used to be the condos, three-story, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So you were able to get together and work something that everybody's, that's wonderful.
Yeah, they kind of did it on their own, and, so, a lot of us saw it just for the first time we could go in and got sent out to us, but a lot of us were, were pleased, were pleased with the, with the revisions, so, yeah, that's really the only concerns that, that pop up that might run into a conflict with our, with our deed of dedications, so.
This is Whitehead, question on the part, you're more concerned on Summerland Drive than the interior Harvey Drive?
Well, actually, I don't know if, I don't know how that would, if that would fall underneath the deed of dedications, if Harvey Drive would, you know, it's, it's part of our private subdivision, so, I would assume it would also have to follow the, the same deed of dedications plus any other rules of their own association.
It'd seem logical that if there were overflow parking, you know, they're going to park as close as they can.
Right.
Harvey Drive would be the location.
Yep, yeah.
So maybe there's something that can be worked out within that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not sure how much curb space you have with that many units in there.
There's a good amount on that east side.
Yeah. Yeah, and I know there were, on the other corner of Summerland's subdivision, there's five duplexes that are going, and I think the lot size is about, is about the same, so this is more than double the amount of duplexes as well, so, I don't know how that will affect it, but sure would a little bit, so.
This is Schrader with staff, just keep in mind that the, the project you're referencing, you think you mean the northeast corner, is that correct? Is that the one?
The, no, the desert road, the southeast, yeah.
See, the south, southeast was not part of...
Correct.
Any of the subdivisions.
Correct.
And the northeast is part of Summerland Farms Edition, which has a different deed of dedication than Summerland Park First Edition. So just something to keep in mind there.
Okay. Is that all underneath the same homeowners' association? Because we'll, we just had a vote as far as for the board of directors, so I'm sure we'll get that ironed out as we get the paperwork filed.
I believe it is, it would just, I don't know how complicated that'll be, you know, essentially, one association essentially trying to enforce...
Sets of rules.
Two different, there's not...
Got a fun few months coming up.
There's not a lot of major differences, but, but actually, the Summerland Park First Edition is probably more restrictive, a little more detailed in what it restricts than the original Summerland Farms Edition.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the plat request? Bring it back to the commission for some action?
So our action is for both preliminary and final?
Correct, yeah, and again, I'm abstaining from this agenda item.
So we have two conditions on the preliminary and one condition, am I...
So we have two conditions on the preliminary and one condition, am I right? Is there one condition on the final?
And I had the same question, whether, if it's the two, I know a new revised plat has been submitted today, but do we still go ahead and include those conditions, just subject to the review of that? To allow, I guess, staff time to review that?
I mean, we just did one staff report for both the preliminary and final plat, and it listed the two conditions. Granted, the one is regarding a revised preliminary plat, so that doesn't really apply to the final plat, but the other condition regarding the deed of dedication would apply to both.
And this is Mike Young, and I'll just say this to all the neighbors that are here, thank you for being here, staying involved and staying interested in this, and also thanks to the developer. It sounds like there has been some kind of give and take, back and forth, and some communication, and hopefully, things are moving forward in a more productive and kind of constructive way, so thank you all for doing that. There's not always a happy ending to everything, but it seems like this is on pace for that, I guess, eventually to get there. And it sounds like some of the water issues, for example, are being taken care of probably more now than they were in the past, and that's positive as well and should help everybody, so thank you all for your efforts, and continue them, so, as we go forward. But with that, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat, subject to the two conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Moving second to approve the preliminary and final plat of Summerland Condos North First Edition, subject to the two staff conditions. Any further discussion?
No, this is Tackett, I want to echo, I'm really happy to see that you were able to work things out, because I know, Mr. Helen, you want to get things moving along, because time is of the essence, and it sounds like you're getting your homeowners' association worked out, and it is nice to hear a happy ending like that, so I wish you all the best in your project and in your homeownership out there.
This is Thornsberry, I have a question about the second condition. I'm not sure what we're agreeing to, since the report showed that Summerland Circle has been changed to Harvey Drive, and then are we dealing with that issue of the deed of dedication? Is there better words here?
Yeah, do you want to maybe just amend your motion?
We can, and that's, yeah, that's what I was asking about before.
Maybe just a revised deed of dedication to address any conflicts. That should cover it.
Yes. Let me write that down. Um. Okay, so I'll amend my, yeah, amend my motion, make a motion to approve, subject to condition number one, that a revised preliminary plat document is submitted showing proposed contours and stormwater detention, and condition two, that a revised plat deed of dedication is submitted that addresses any
Conflicts.
Conflicts.
Potential, yeah.
So that's an amendment to your first motion?
Yeah.
Not a new motion?
I'll second that, okay.
Thank you.
Is that addressed?
That does, thanks.
So, point of clarity, do we have to approve the amendment and then approve the motion?
I don't think so. I can't.
I don't, not too sure on that one. If there's any concern, if anyone thinks we need to, I don't think it'll
Does anybody, everybody understand what they're voting on?
Okay, so first, a vote to approve the amended motion?
That's fine.
Correct. All those in favor of approving the amended motion on the deed of dedication to address any conflicts?
Aye.
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 That passes. So now, all those in favor of approval of the preliminary final plat, subject to the staff conditions as amended?
Yeah. Aye.
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 Yes, and one abstention. Wow. Somebody will raise up on that. All right, that is approved. Next is another preliminary and final plat request. This is a request by Roof Development for an eight-lot preliminary and final plat of St. Joseph's Square, located at the northwest corner of East Third Street and Lafayette Street. Staff report.
This is Sanderow, staff. Applicant is requesting to replat lots eight and nine of original plat of Waterloo East, Block 31. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area, and the proposed preliminary plat would not have a negative impact on vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The plat would be served by Lafayette Street, which is classified as a collector, and East Third Street, which is classified as a local street. There will be one vehicular access point to the site from Lafayette Street. There is 36-inch sanitary sewer in Lafayette Street and an 18-inch sanitary sewer in East Third Street to serve the development. There is 21-inch storm sewers located in both Lafayette and East Third Streets. There is a 12-inch water main in Lafayette Street, and there is also a 10-inch water main in East Third Street. The Waterloo Water Works also has a fiber optic line along East Third Street and on the west side of the street. Lot sizes range from 1,655 square feet to 4,001 square feet, with an average lot size of 2,244 square feet. Should be noted that the, in the C3 Central Business District, there is no minimum lot area per family required. The proposed lot sizes would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, and would appear to meet the intent of the C3 district, which promotes smaller lot sizes and more dense development. The C3 is designed and intended to accommodate the variety of retail stores, services, and related activities, including residential development, which often occupy the area within the Central Business District. On the submitted plat, most of the items from the checklist are shown on the plat. As the site is zoned C3, there are no required building setbacks, therefore, building setback lines are not shown on the final plat. The existing contours of the site are not shown on the preliminary plat, along with proposed contours, which is known as a grading plan. A street right-of-way width is shown on the preliminary plat for Lafayette and East Third Street, however, the width of the streets and their pavement types are not labeled. At this time, no deed of dedication has been submitted with the plat. Staff recommends that the request for the preliminary and final plat of St. Joseph's Square be approved due to the following reasons. The plat can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. The plat meets the intent of the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, and with the condition that a deed of dedication is submitted.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the plat request? Bring it back to the commission for action.
This is Tackett, I move that we approve the request for the preliminary and final plat, and subject to the condition that a deed of dedication is submitted.
This is Mike Young, I'll second.
Moving second to approve the preliminary and final plat request, subject to the one staff condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is a request by Goodwill Industries for a one-lot preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Plat Number 11, generally located east of 2535 Crossroads Boulevard. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The request would create one lot on 1.747 acres for commercial development. There would not be a negative impact on vehicular, pedestrian, or pedestrian traffic in the area. Access would, to the lot would be gained by, from Crossroads Boulevard. The site is zoned S1 Shopping Center Commercial District, and has been since the adoption of the ordinance. The site plan shows a detention pond in the southwest corner of the lot, or southeast corner of the lot, and a 60-foot drainage easement is shown along the rear of the lot. The area is currently unplatted land and in the process of being developed. The adjacent land to the west has recently been developed to the, into the BioLife Plasma Services Building. The plat shows a .072-acre portion of land labeled as Lot A along Crossroads Boulevard that would be dedicated to the city as right-of-way after development of the lot. The subdivision ordinance requires that the preliminary and final plat submissions include such criteria as boundaries, boundaries of property, proposed streets, easements, and width of right-of-way, contours, and utility locations. The site plan and final plat shows proposed access to the lot from existing streets. The plat also shows the names, lot lines, and dimensions of the proposed and existing surrounding lots. The site plan indicated where existing utilities and drainage easements will be retained. The site plan also shows the proposed location for detention ponds in the rear southeast corner of the lot to be developed, and also shows additional green space along the drainage way in the rear of the lot. The plan also indicates green space in the front yard of the building along Crossroads Boulevard. The plat shows the lot proposed as Crossroads Plat Number 11, Lot 1. The site plan shows existing elevation lines and proposed elevation lines for the property in question. The deed of dedication appears to be in conformance with recent deed of dedications of adjacent lots. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for preliminary and final plats of Crossroads Plat Number 11 be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with subdivision ordinance, with minor exceptions that do not appear to negatively affect the intent of the subdivision ordinance, and the plat is in accordance with a comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classify this area as commercial.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the plat request? Bring it back to the commission for a vote.
This is Mike Young, and I'll move that we approve the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Plat Number 11.
Thornsberry, second.
Moving second to approve the preliminary and final plat of Crossroads Plat Number 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is a vacate request. This is a request by city builders to vacate the 20-foot plated building line located along the east property line of 419 Holm Street. Staff report.
The request to vacate the 20-foot building line could have a negative impact on the surrounding area, neighborhood, as the proposed addition is in the required front yard, and would not be uniform with the rest of the neighborhood, as the rest of the neighborhood meets the 20-foot building line. The request to vacate the 20-foot building line would not appear to have a negative impact on the vehicular or pedestrian traffic. The site has been zoned R2, one and two-family residence districts since the adoption of the ordinance in 1969. The building line to be vacated was established by the original developer of Miller Park Edition, who originally required the 20-foot building line when the area was platted. In 2012, staff reviewed a request by the applicant to build a 12-foot by 20-foot deck that was supposed to be built on the west end of the home in the rear yard. During the review, the current, during the review of the current request to build the Three Seasons Room, it was discovered that the deck was not built according to the original site plan, indicating the deck would be constructed at the west end of the home, but was instead built on the east end of the home. The deck that was built is encroaching approximately 10 feet past the 20-foot required building line, and even if the building line was vacated, the ordinance only allows a deck or unenclosed porch to extend eight feet into the required front yard. The applicant now wants to remove the deck and build a similar-sized Three Seasons Room in about the same footprint. The proposed Three Seasons Room would extend over the platted line and into the required front yard setback, which would also require that a variance to the front yard setback be approved by the Board of Adjustment. The proposed addition would appear to be out of character with the setback of the other homes along Denver Street. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate a 20-foot building line be denied for the following reasons. The request to vacate would appear to have a negative impact on the orderly appearance in the surrounding area. The request would not appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Are there any questions for staff?
This is Tackett, I don't know if I, staff can answer it, but I'm curious if it was approved for the west end. Do we know why it was built on the east end?
We do not know why that happened. I don't know if the applicant's here or not can answer that question.
This is Thornsberry, the west end has this huge drop-off, and the east end is flat, so that might have been one of the reasons.
Yeah, then it should have come back and been changed and signed off on again, and we would have caught this situation.
Just to clarify, the applicant's not here today?
I don't believe so.
I'll make a recommendation, if we're ready, to, that the request to vacate should be denied.
I'll second.
Moving second to deny the vacate request. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That request is denied. This is another vacate request. This is a request by Martin Nance for an encroachment, or, excuse me, this is an encroachment request, the same heading. This is a request by Martin Nance for an encroachment agreement to allow for the construction, excuse me, to allow for an existing 12-foot by 10-foot floating deck and fence to remain within the city-owned right-of-way, located at 1319 Colorado Street. Staff report.
Now, the request could have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood, as the deck is not uniform with the remaining neighborhood. The request could have a negative impact on traffic or pedestrian conditions in the area, as visibility would appear to be an issue at this intersection. There is sidewalk located along Colorado within this area, and it would appear the visibility is impaired for vehicles and pedestrians approaching this intersection. The area was originally platted in the mid-1950s, the particular home was built in 1959. There is a waterline service off of Madison Street that runs underneath the deck. All waterline service lines are the responsibility of the property owner, therefore, the owner would have to remove the deck if there was ever a problem with the service line. A complaint was registered to the City of Waterloo's Code Enforcement Office citing that a deck had been built in the right-of-way. Code Enforcement then made the planning office aware of the situation. It was determined that the deck was built without a permit. The deck was, the deck with decorative fencing is approximately seven feet from the back of the curb, and approximately three feet closer to the curb than a nearby yield sign. Therefore, staff has serious concerns with the visibility for crossing pedestrian and vehicle traffic, particularly for an intersection with only yield signs on Manson Street and no four-way stop system. The engineering department has recommended denial of the request, as city code does not allow for residents to install items such as decks within the right-of-way, and that the right-of-way should be maintained for roads, utilities, and other public uses. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the encroachment agreement to allow for the legalization of the 10-by-12 deck and fence encroachment be denied for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative, would appear to have a negative impact on the traffic conditions in the area. The request would appear to have a negative impact on the pedestrian traffic conditions in the area, and city code does not allow for items to be placed within the right-of-way, as right-of-way should be maintained for roads, utilities, and other public uses. Are there any questions for staff?
This is Thornsberry. I'm not certain if these become final records or whatever, but isn't that Madison Street on, in your second paragraph under staff analysis zoning ordinance, and not Manson Street?
Yes.
Okay, just, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I'm very familiar with Manson Street, and I keep mixing the two up. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for staff?
This is Tackett, and it might be a question for the owner. When was the deck built? How long has it been in that place?
I'm not 100% sure. Maybe the other can answer that, as there was no permit pulled, so we couldn't tell you when it was built. Is there applicant here today?
Applicant here? No. Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the encroachment request? Bring it back to the commission for an action.
I move that the request for the encroachment agreement to allow for the legalization of the 10-by-12 deck and fence encroachment be denied.
Second.
Moving second to deny the deck and fence encroachment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That request is denied. Next is a request by 500 Sycamore Street Housing Co-op, for an encroachment agreement to allow for the portions of the existing building, building to allow for the portions of the existing building building, and I'm going to struggle through this word, proportionance, to encroach into the public right-of-way of Sycamore Street and East Park Avenue. Staff report?
This is Schrader with staff. Applicants proposing the encroachment agreement to allow for existing encroachments from the Park Towers Building located at 500 Sycamore Street, encroaching into the public right-of-way of both Sycamore Street and East Park Avenue. This request is similar to a request that was approved for encroachment agreements at the Russell Lamson Building, which is also due to a proposed sale of the building in a planned renovation project. Staff would note that the requested encroachments have been in existence for a number of years, with some, if not all, dating back to the original construction of the building in 1929, and have not appeared to have had a negative impact on the area. The building overhang and entrance canopies would likely not technically require approval of an encroachment agreement, as the zoning ordinance in Chapter 27, under exceptions and modifications, includes a wording that states, "In the C2 and less restrictive districts, signs, overhangs, and marquees attached to a building may extend over street right-of-way lines provided the erection of such signs, overhangs, and marquees are constructed in accordance with the provisions of the building code." However, the building code encroachment of .11 foot, the of the actual footprint of the building itself, and encroaching into Sycamore Street, would require approval by either encroachment or vacate, of which the encroachment would appear to be the more appropriate method to use to keep a uniform width of platted street right-of-way, and inclusion of the roof and canopy overhangs, even though not technically needed, will help ensure zoning compliance to the buyer. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the proposed encroachment agreement. Questions for staff?
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the encroachment request? Bring it back to the commission for action.
This is Tackett. I move that we approve the recommendation for the encroachment and subject to assigned executed encroachment agreement is provided.
This is Mike Young, I'll second.
Moving second to approve the encroachment agreement request, subject to the one staff condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That recommendation or that motion passes. Next is a plan of study. This is a request by the City of Waterloo to expand the Martin Road Development Plan, TIF Increment Financing District. Staff report?
This is Schrader with staff. I've got, as you may recall, this went before the commission several months back, or it has not been forwarded on to the city council yet, and there were a few. The state code requires that TIF expansions on ag land greater than 10 acres include consent of the property owner. We did not hear back from a couple of the property owners, so we had to amend the boundary. I'm passing out a map. It's no different than what you have in the packet, other than it highlights the areas that were previously proposed to be included and we're now removing. Also, since we were amending it, we heard from a couple property owners that asked that their areas be included, so we're expanding it, and a couple areas shaded in green on the map that I passed around, too, but it's a fairly minor change to the proposed Martin Road TIF District expansion area. Any questions for staff?
I just had a question. The TIF District, is that 20 years or?
Yes, this is a an economic development TIF, which is limited to 20 years. It's 20 years from the date debt is certified, so it's not necessarily
Oh, okay.
date of approval, but.
This is Whitehead. I think I asked this question when this was before us, previously. On this, I'm going to call it the north exit ramp off of 20. How come that piece is not included?
Cemetery.
Yeah, just to the west of the cemetery, north of
The cemetery owns that.
The field also?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Plan on using that, huh?
Expansion area.
Yeah, I guess.
They don't have any incentive plan?
No. They've got a plan a long way in the future, though, so.
Well, save that comment. Any other questions for staff? And you just need a simple motion to accept the changes to the plat or to the TIF District?
Yep.
Somebody be willing to make that motion?
I move that we accept the proposed Martin Road area TIF District expansion as presented.
Second.
Moving second to accept the Martin Road area TIF District changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Any discussion items?
And then I'm aware of.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Moving second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.